Okay, if we can all, if we can all go ahead and take our seats and get ready for this meeting. Uh, if we, also if we can, just for courteous, silence our phones, you know, and such. Okay, um, I'd like to welcome everyone here today in Livingston Parish. Chris Winter, day Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, ten a.m. At the Livingston Parish Council Chambers. Can we get a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Quint Moll?
To the flag, the United States of America, the republic which sustains one nation, under God, in the world, with dignity and justice.
Okay, Ms. Tony, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bird? Mr. Clark?
Present.
Mr. Quint Moll? Mr. Delatt? Mr. Weber here? Mr. Dupren? Ms. Falido? Mr. Harold? Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Parker is absent. Mr. Rayford? And then, Mr. Lozina here? Mr. Knight? And Mr. Cluett? All right, thank y'all, we have a forum.
Okay, thanks everyone for coming. If we have any public comments, could you please, uh, register, submit them to Ms. Tony, your secretary? And, uh, and also too, we always provide an op- opportunity to comment after each agenda item and at the end of our meeting. Our next item on the agenda is number five, and that's approval of the minutes.
So moved.
I got a, any public comment on our, uh, publ- on our regular meeting minutes from our last meeting? Okay, hearing no comments, I got a, um, a motion by Commissioner Delott and a second by Commissioner Bailey. Do I have any public comment for our special meeting on, um, twelve eighteen, twenty twenty-four? So, do I have a motion, uh? Okay, a motion from Commissioner Delott?
It's second.
Second by Commissioner Rayford, and any opposition? So moved. Our next last bullet item under approval of the minutes is approval of our financial statements ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have any public comments on our financial statements as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? Hearing, hearing no comments from the public, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bailey? Second by Commissioner Harris. Any opposition? So moved. Next item on our agenda, number six, is report by the President. Today is a special day for the ARBC. First, I would like to introduce a, an, a, a new, uh, I want to say employee, but a, a person that's working for the ARBC. He's under contract with us, and, um, this person has thirty-four years' experience with a high level, uh, working on a high level of government. Working at a high level of government, he hasn't forgot his local area and has been very instrumental to, to, to the extent that probably we wouldn't be here today and a lot of things wouldn't be happening like they are today in regards to the Amiet River Basin and addressing the flooding. He's helped with project funding. He's helped communities. He's helped, uh, the whole area with their natural resources, particularly dealing with flood protection. Not only just for the capital region, but for the entire state of Louisiana. You might know him, uh, he worked for U.S. Congressman Garrett Graves. He's, was his Chief of Staff for many years, and as you know, Chief of Staff is the person that's behind the scenes that really makes things happen. And so we're honored today, uh, to have him working with us to move this forward and try to do some, some of the things that our citizens in the capital region and the Amiet River Basin expect. If you would allow me to introduce Mr. Paul Sawyer.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'll start over. President Clark, thank you for that introduction, uh, and, and just to give you a, a sense of what Chief of Staff does, really a, a more apt description is Chief of Stuff. Uh, you know, just, just a, a general all-purpose player. And, um, you know, I've had the benefit and the honor of working with many of you. You mentioned those thirty-four years, I've had the honor and benefit of working with many of you for all of those years. Some are new faces, some are, are old faces, but I think the, uh, the, the connective tissue in all of our relationships is problem solving, working for the people, delivering solutions to the people that, that, that they expect. And I would, I would point out that, you know, in the, in the years that, that we have all worked together, you know, I, I've been working around the Amiet River Basin all those years on flood control projects or risk reduction in, in specific areas, specific communities, basin-wide. And if the problems were easy to solve, they would have been solved already. I think if, if this group had just, had, uh, had the opportunity years ago to form as you are right now, I think, uh, I think the Amiet River Basin would have been a lot further ahead in problem solving and delivering solutions to, uh, to the people of the Amiet River Basin. As I said, if the, if the solutions were easy, they would have been done that, they would have been done by now. This board, this opportunity, provides us alignment. The problems are difficult, but they're obvious. I don't think anybody in here can say, wow, I, I just don't understand how we're going to fix the Amiet River Basin, how we're going to reduce flood risk in the Amiet River Basin. The problems are obvious, the solutions are complex, but with this board newly constituted or recently reconstituted, I think we, we have the ability to be aligned, focused, and deliver results for people. And I, I just really appreciate the opportunity to work for you, work with you, and to continue serving, uh, in a capacity that benefits the constituents and the citizens of the Amiet River Basin and the capital region. So, thank you, and, um, President Clark, you didn't mention, but if, 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 if anyone would like to ask questions, I'm, I'm available. But otherwise, I'm at your disposal, I work for you.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, please.
Just for full, just for full disclosure, did you tell them that Livingston Parish was offering free housing just so we can get a bigger piece of this pie?
Well, um, I used to tell Mark Harold that, uh, I get paid by, I get paid by Garrett Graves in the past. I get paid by Garrett Graves, but I work for Livingston Parish. But now I work for all of the parishes in the basin. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll use this opportunity to reiterate, uh, something that I've said before. This is a system, it's dynamic. So what you already know is that one, one raindrop falls over here, it's going to impact somebody over here. If there's a flood control project over here, it's going to have some impact on somebody over there. And so, working together in the parishes, uh, in this dynamic system, uh, I think, um, I think, well, I just, I think with the master plan and the alignment of this board, I think we're gonna, we're gonna do, make some really good headway for the citizens of the, uh, Amiet River Basin, um, and so, uh, so thank you.
Good deal, thank you, Paul. We appreciate you, we're, we're glad to have you, uh, to be dedicated for not only what you've done in the past, but, uh, also dedicated now for the future of the Amiet River Basin Commission and Drainage Conservation District. Thank you. Okay, referring back to our agenda, our next item, uh, under the President's report, I would like, I would like to request the board to add to the agenda this, um, a request for an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the ARBC and the CPRA. And, and, Ms., Mr. Bankston, can you explain, um, what specifically this amendment is between our agreement with CPRA? What that's gonna allow for, the con- context of that?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. The agreement has a deadline to it, and the request for an amendment is to extend that deadline. We have a deadline that would be in March, March thirty-first, and discussing with Mr. Marino and, uh, CPRA to extend the agreement so that all the items that we necessarily have as far as it relates to the providing information either by Dewberry, it doesn't require any change in dollar amount, it just is a, uh, amendment. So I would ask the consideration of the board to, uh, direct us to seek that, that amendment to extend it all, all the way into June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
So, in, in summary, what this is for, is for our master plan?
It's, right.
Our master plan that's being prepared by Dewberry has been prepared in its draft form, uh, before the deadline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. However, uh, it's draft, and, uh, the, the content, the meat is there. Uh, and we're, we're proud of the work that they've done. However, it being in a draft, we need to synthesize the content to where it tells the story of the Amiet River Basin and what we're doing and where we want to go. So this will allow us to, to put those little final touches on there and to also, uh, to handle any, uh, financial, uh, housekeeping, uh, transactions that may be pending, uh, that might extend beyond March thirty-first.
So, um, I would ask, um, the board to consider adding an item to the agenda concerning this particular amendment. Is, if there's no opposition, we'd like to, that to be considered.
Mr. Chairman or Mr. Bankston?
Yes.
Would this be in order at this time? Would it be in, in order at this time to, uh, also get approval from Dewberry's master drainage to share it with local government and particularly Livingston Parish? We are in a process of doing a master drainage plan, and if they can share their information with us, it would sure help Livingston Parish a lot. Would that be in order at this time or not?
I think that, that, I don't think, I think Dewberry anticipates being able to add that, provide that to you anyway, but if you want to put an item on the agenda in reference to that.
Dewberry, do you require that?
Yep. Okay, so, hold on, um, our, President Delott's request is recognized. However, I think that we need to do one at a time. So, uh, certainly we can, we can, we can do that and honor that and recognize that. And as far as I'm concerned, uh, I don't see a problem with sharing of public data.
But the, the mo- so the question is, um, Mr. President, is we need to add the item to the agenda first, and if there's no opposition, then the item is added, but it, that has to be a motion and a second to add the item to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Harris, just to clarify, that is to extend our agreement with CPRA? And do I have a second on that? Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Bailey, and that's the, and that's to add it to our agenda, is there any?
No opposition.
Any opposition? Okay. In light of Commissioner Delott's request? Can I get a motion to, let me clarify this, um, a motion to utilize, to allow Livingston Parish to utilize some of the modeling data that's being prepared for the ARBC master plan to assist in the preparation of Livingston Parish Drainage Master Plan? Is that correct? Is that correct, uh, Commissioner Delott? Okay. So I have a, I have a motion by Commissioner Harold. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Quint Moll. Any opposition to the, adding this, uh, item to our agenda? Hearing none, it's adopted, both are adopted, to add both to our agenda. So, now that these items have been added to our agenda, um, I would like, I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, our request to the CPRA to extend our contract, our intergovernmental agreement with them for the ARBC master plan. Do I? Okay, I have a commi- uh, motion by Commissioner Bailey and a second by Commissioner Harold. Uh, do I have any opposition? Hearing none, motion pass. Do we have any public comment in regards to extending our, this amended, um, intergovernmental agreement with CPRA? I'm sorry. Okay, hearing no public comment. Okay, our next, next one is, um, to cons- to allow the contractor for the ARBC master plan to share some of the, uh, data that they have already prepared with our public funds, uh, with Livingston Parish for their development of their, uh, Livingston Parish Drainage Master Plan. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Harold and seconded by Commissioner Delott. Do I have any public comment in this regard?
One comment, not, uh, not opposition, not public comment, but, uh, just wanna, on behalf of us, the, and, and Dewberry with the master plan, make sure that, um, representing CPRA, I, I absolutely think we should make everything public, that's what we do, we're very transparent. I also want to make sure though that what's transferred are finalized sort of deliverables on there. We're not in such a draft that we may change something between the draft now, and so we have a conflict somewhere between the parish's plan and not. So, uh, I, having been in that position, uh, as soon as we can, we can shift those, that, that knowledge, great, awesome, as long as everybody's comfortable doing so, just wanted to make that one comment.
Very good comment. And President, Commissioner Delott, okay, good deal. All right, um, so, uh, Commissioner Harris, yes, sir. Push your, push your mark.
This is a perfect example of like-minded people working together, people that, we have Dewberry has information, paid for with public funds, another agency needs it, of course, we're gonna share that, just like CPRA said, that this is, we're all in this together, anybody that can help a fellow agency should take full opportunity of that. No big restrictions or agreement, I've got information, we're gonna share it. This is the way it's supposed to work with people that are really serious about trying to do good for the base.
Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Larry.
One consideration, excuse me, one consideration is, uh, the motion was as it relates to Livingston. I think you, you may want to consider that amendment to be to any entity that may request it, whether it's East Baton Rouge, St. James, or any entity, uh, that, um, has requested that information, that that information be made available. Now, when you're making that information available, it needs to be in a form so that, uh, as we transfer stuff to, or information to people, that we know what's been transferred, and if it's been modified to some degree, what those modifications may be. But, uh, uh, Mr. President Delott, you may want to consider an, modifying your motion to include any entity, not limited just to Livingston.
I, I agree, and maybe also the motion, Mr. Bankston, that we have, uh, Mr. President, John, also Mr. Paul Sawyer, work with Dewberry and agreeing what can be released and not at that time. Because it may be, like the gentleman stated earlier, we may have some information that may be changed, may not be set. So maybe, instead of everybody just beating up on Dewberry, maybe there's someone, whether it's Paul or whether it's the President, or someone authorizes Dewberry says, yes, it's ready to be released. Is that fair or not?
So your, your motion would be that upon completion of information, that the information, uh, or data, uh, when it's in a final form, can be released to any, uh, parish or enti- parish or agency or public entity that may find that information, uh, appropriate.
I can't say it no better than that, but I'll show off for that as a motion.
All right, is there a second to that?
Okay, so we have a, we have a, uh, motion. We have a motion and a second to modify the original motion, uh, to extend the use of data from the ARBC master plan in its complete form, uh, to any agency, public entity, for use to, for the betterment of flood protection and, uh, drainage in the Amiet River Basin.
Mr. President, I, I just have one comment.
Commissioner Harold, go ahead.
Uh, I like everything that was said, I forget how someone just said it about hammering Dewberry. Uh, I'm good with everything, but I also think we need to hammer Dewberry on a regular basis, just to keep them on their toes. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I had a motion by Commissioner Harold, and the, do I have a second? Commissioner Delott, so, any opposition to the modified motion? Hearing none, it's adopted? Any public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, referring back to our agenda. Third bullet under ARBC President, um, status of the Upper Amiet River Flood Risk Reduction and Restoration Planning and Construction Project. I'd like to let y'all know that we were approved for two million dollars to look at the possibility of, uh, developing some form of retention in the Upper Amiet River, uh, area. So when you say Upper Amiet River, uh, you know, for us, it, it goes beyond the Louisiana Mississippi State line. But in this case, it's primarily, I would say above, um, Highway one ninety or thirty-seven. And in the area, um, there's, there's a lot of sand and gravel mining areas, a lot of sites, and that is a very unstable region, that it's pretty obvious that there's some things that need to be done. So just letting you, you all know that things are in the works from all different directions, not just in Bayman Shack, not just on the Lower Amiet, we're also looking at the Upper Amiet, the Comete River diversion, and on and on. You know, it's a game of inches, and we feel like, uh, the combination of things is gonna make a real significant difference. Do I have any comments from the board or any additional information you'd like to add? Okay, do I have any public comments on, uh, what we're doing in the Upper Comete and, uh, plans and the projects? Okay, here no. Upper Amiet. Okay, here no public comments, our next, uh, bullet under number six, bullet number four. I would like to ask the board again to add to the agenda, um, the requests from OCD to OCD to utilize money that was conditionally approved for the Upper Comete River, East Fleschiana Parish, Comete River, Upper Comete River Clearing and Snagging Project. If you remember at our last meeting, we had a series of, uh, public who, public persons who came in and they spoke adamantly against this project. Also too, I participated on a, a conference call with OCD and, uh, modelers, hydraulic and hydrologic modelers who were evaluating this project, uh, for the benefits. And they had determined that this particular project did not meet the benefits, sufficient to pass muster or be approved by them. And also at the last meeting, uh, Commissioner Parker, who isn't here today, he had recommended that the funding go back to, um, to Region Nine, or the potential for repurposing that, or reallocating that money somewhere else that could be of more benefit in light of these situation. So, uh, we're, we're looking at that, and this is just, um, I need a motion to consider that when we meet with OCD. We need to talk, um, unified about what we agree to do, and I just need a motion to accept, uh, a, a resolution that allows us to do that. And so, in your packet, you can refer to Res- Resolution Number eleven eighty-four. Uh, hopefully you've all read through it. But, uh, we need to add this resolution to our agenda. I got a motion by Commissioner Harold and a second by Commissioner Delott. Is there any opposition? And just to, looking at the resolution, the idea is, is this money would be potentially added to a project on the Lower Amiet River. Livingston Parish has a project already that has been submitted to the Watershed Initiative that is conditionally approved, and they're well on their way, but it's only for a portion of the Lower Amiet River. You know, you, you have so much money and it can only take you so far. By adding this money, it would help address- By adding this money, it would help address a broader span of the Lower Amit River. Now, the purpose for that and the priority for that is that at the end of the day, all of the water from the upper and the midsection of the Amit River has to flow through the Lower Amit River. So a lot of these projects that we're going to be implementing across the basin to improve drainage, they're going to push water further down quicker and faster. So we understand that the Lower Amit River is shoaling, it's filling with sediment, there's hot spots, maybe the entire bottom is not silted in, but maybe there's some plugs here and there, and this will help all of that water get out to where it wants to go, and that's around sea level, Lake Moapaw and Lake Ponchatrain. So we think it's very important that this project, if this money could be used down there, that would help a broader scope of projects that we're implementing throughout the Amit River Basin. And also this resolution, it was a consensus of a project, the ARBC Project Committee meeting that we had. Everybody sat down at the table on the project committee, and the project committee, by the way, is made up of the parishes, that the parish leaders that represent the parishes within the basin, and this is what they came up with as what would be the best use for, if we're allowed to use these funds, the best use for these funds in the Amit River Basin. Is there any public comments? Anybody would like to talk? Paul?
Mr. President, per a recommendation that you had made, it recognizes that notwithstanding the disposition of the East Flee Shiana Funds, that there's an item in this resolution that recognizes that the commission will continue to work with East Flee Shiana Parish to identify flood risk reduction initiatives, so that even though the money is infeasible for these particular projects, we're not giving up on East Flee Shiana. We're going to refocus those efforts in a different way.
Thank you, Paul, and that is absolutely correct. We're all in this together, and believe me, we fought hard for this particular project for East Flee Shiana. I myself personally spent a lot of time, and perhaps there may be something else that we can do, you know, maybe with a portion of the money. I don't want to get ahead of the game to help East Flee Shiana do something that may still benefit them. It's to the tune of $26 million and some change. Any comments, Commissioner Cluot?
Yes, Mr. President. So is it already, Mr. Deloitte, is already earmarked on what on the Lower Amit that it's going to be doing? We know of the separate projects, I mean, do you have it within your discussion?
Yes, yes, you know, we had originally, when we first come together, there was big plans for the Lower Amit. I think it was something like $100 million that was needed to be spent on the Lower Amit to remove that plug down there. And when I say the Lower Amit, you know, don't get confused with the diversion canal, because we're talking about the historical original channel that's below the weir, that lets water go down the diversion canal. You know, there's talk about restoring the weir. If you restore the weir, well, that puts it back like it was a long time ago, but you need to do something on the original channel, which local people tell, Randy, you can testify, it's silted in, and because the flow has slowed down, and when you see muddy water, that's liquid dirt, and when it slows down, it settles out and it builds up, and it's been building up for half a century. And so that's the mitigation factor, not just letting water from the top to the bottom go get out, but it also helps mitigate some of the other projects that are being proposed that are on fast forward, you know, in the works. Commissioners Deloitte, do you have any, can you expand upon this a little bit?
Yes, you did a great job, Mr. Chairman. The project, when we say the Lower Amit River, we had, Livingston Parish taxpayers has committed $5 million to start the environmental and engineering of this project. We have received $20 million from the Amit River Basin, and that's enough for about half of this project. This project's going to start from below Bayou Man Shack and go all the way to Lake Moapaw. The engineering has showed that there is a lot of silt below the Highway 22 Bridge in Clayo, all the way past Culture's Bluff, but there are some hot spots from Bayou Man Shack all the way down to the weir. And so we're going to look at this project as a whole. $50 million would complete the project, in our opinion. The engineering is just about complete to verify that, but I can't think of a bigger bang for the dollar, guys, for the region, not just for Livingston Parish, not just for Centon, for anybody else, but for the region. The river goes straight down there, and we have to get the, 1957, there's documentation saying that we should be dredging that river. Well, we can't dredge, but we've got some silt removal, some de-snagging that we can do, and that's what we're trying to do.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Cluot?
Yeah, I just want to close with thanking the project committee and y'all leadership, and I do believe that that total steps in the right direction. We appreciate all y'all's hard work. And Mr. Deloitte, good for you. Appreciate it, man.
This is the magic of the ARBC Board. You have parish leaders now that in the past may not have worked so closely together. I know in our parish, if East Baton, in the past, if East Baton Rouge crossed Bayou Man Shack, we'd have them arrested. But that's not the case now. Fred?
Just the tank.
No, but, no, but now more than ever, you know, I've been around a long time, this is a great thing and a great opportunity. We're all sitting here and we speak as one, and with that, you know, we can do great things. For example, just like, you know, if we're able to help, still help East Flee Shiana, but yet get more bang for the buck on the Lower Amit, where all this water has to go, I mean, that's, to me, is making some progress. All right, so, so, so this, so, the, after all of this is said in our discussion, I'm looking for a motion to approve adding this resolution to our agenda, to, or OCD to consider this and approval of the resolution. I have a motion by Commissioner Harold and a second by Commissioner Bailey to approve the resolution. Any opposition? Any public comments? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, let's, referring back to our agenda, we moving right along, under item number seven, is report by our ARBC legal counsel, Mr. Larry Bankston. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. President. In meeting with Paul Sawyer, we had a discussion concerning the master plan, and it was Mr. Sawyer's recommendation that we transmit a letter to the Transportation Committee Chairman, both in the Senate and the House. As you know, we have the obligation to submit annual plans, but this year, we're submitting the master plan. So Paul brought up the issue that advising the two committee chairmen, that this year we are going to simply submit the master plan and not a separate annual plan. And so, Paul, you may want to discuss that issue of the letter that you drafted to be submitted, so turn that over to Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. You know, there's, first of all, there's a lot of ambiguity in the, in Act 490, at least in terms of our reporting requirements, and probably the most glaring is the annual plan, how we are supposed to report to the legislature, which also, you know, that annual plan has to be approved. We're also under the obligation to produce a master plan that has to be approved by the legislature, and both enterprises are expensive. You know, you already know this, the annual plan is not a quick and easy thing to do, and a master plan is even harder and more expensive to do, and we have a constrained budget. And so the reporting requirements are going to conflict with our ability to perform. So if we want to provide the legislature a good master plan, execute the duty that they had assigned this commission to do, we need to focus on it. And so the letter, there's a draft letter in your packet that requests that the legislature give us an opportunity to roll in the annual plan, or at least have the master plan serve as our annual plan in 2025. And we remind them that we've, you know, we've delivered them an annual plan in 2024, and we respect that obligation, and going forward, we will. But considering the, our requirement to balance expensive and time-consuming annual plans with even more expensive and even more time-consuming master plans, and having to deliver those to the legislature, we're just asking them to grant us latitude to just focus on the master plan this year, and we'll resume normal business, so to speak, next year with an annual plan, which, you know, is a way of measuring the progress or lack of progress, or however you want to look at it, on our master plan. So the annual plan is, should serve as a yardstick. Brian and Mr. Marino could also attest that, you know, that's the functionality of the CPRA annual plan and master plan. So anyway, that's the intent of this letter, to ask the legislature to grant us latitude to execute in the form of a master plan this year and not both.
Just wanted to make the commission aware that this letter would go out advising the two committees, but also would go out to the ARBC delegation members, so they'll be aware of that. The only other item that I have on is consideration of any legislative changes. Mr. Sawyer and I met this past week to kind of go over the possibility of some language changes and some other aspects of it, but we would anticipate for the next meeting in February that we would have any proposed language changes or any additions. One of the items that we talked about was the possibility of giving the commission the authority to create impact districts like you have for the Comete without having to go back to the legislature for approval of a specific district. And this would allow for either a taxing measure that would be involved for a specific area within the district to be created without the necessity of having an additional legislative act. That's one of the areas that we talked about as a possibility. And I asked the board or any of the members who think that there needs to be any specific suggested changes, that you have those to us in the next couple of weeks, and then we can work on drafts of any legislation that you may see necessary, and then the board could vote on whether or not you want to make those proposals and submit to the legislature with the next upcoming session. So if you have something that you think we need to make a change, just let us know, and Mrs. Sawyer and I will work on getting that language for you to review for the next meeting.
Any comments from the board? So I heard the word tax. Okay, more taxes. Is this more taxes? But, you know, taxes is what pays for the public services that we provide. It would be nice if we could be creative and not have more taxes, but if we can't, then it may have to be as, you know, may have to be this way. Larry, please.
Just so everyone is clear, the legislation allows for, currently allows for three mills, but it also requires that that area that is going to be taxed has to be a vote of the people. So there is, as opposed to like a levy board who doesn't have those requirements, all the legislation that we have require a vote of the people.
That helps clarify it a little bit, at least the people have a say-so in whether we add taxes or not, with all due respect. Any comments from the board? Any public comments? Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, under number eight on the agenda is old business. And we have our ARBC contractor is the Water Institute, and it's being led for the ARBC's efforts for Louisiana Watershed Region 9 Coordinator efforts, and also ARBC Master Plan Project Management and Coordination, and that's Mr. Garvin Pittman. Garvin?
Red light is on, there we go. All right, thank you very much, President Clark. As you'll see from my presentation, the last month, month of December, was a relatively slow and light month. First, as usual, keep on schedule, we continued biweekly meetings of the master committee. We held meetings on the 20th, the 3rd, the 3rd was led by Brett Mc. The master plan draft is, you will soon, as you know and as you will hear soon, is out under draft, and I, myself and Brett and are both reviewing it. We hope to have comments back to this mission to Dewberry by Monday next week. Brett, I don't know how many of you know him, but he has been involved heavily with coastal master plan, but he has a lot more master plan and experience associated with that, but heavier role. And our next meeting is this Friday. We encourage all of you on the master plan to attend as this. Funding workshops, there were no funding workshops held by LWI last month, sorry. There was one scheduled for tomorrow. As of yesterday evening, it was, and as the project delivery workshops have also been put on hold, so there was, as I said, it was light, so it was in the watershed coordinator. An old item that I mentioned to you before is the Louisiana Watershed Initiative Public Project Inventory System. That's an inventory system that LWI is leading, it is binding, it is public, just simply for LWI. We had, the project committee, President Clark, had tentatively agreed that we would not add project, this inventory until the project list was finalized for plan. I think some of that is still ongoing, so it would be my recommendation to not update that project list to LWI at this time. If you would like to change that, please let. If you would like to change that, please let me know. The important thing there is not. We have finalized. Other items of note that I did this month was review the Dewberry October and November invoice, which will be submitted to CPRA today. The Region Nine Louisiana Watershed Initiative Quarterly Report was submitted yesterday afternoon. And the Louisiana Watershed Initiative Quarterly Request for Payment is in progress. We should have all the final information for that by the close of this, this week or early next. Invoice for CPRA, as I mentioned, goes in today. And I'm also headed to assist Mr. Sawyer's transition. Let me again congratulate this. That's all I have for you this month, please, questions?
Do we have any questions for Garvin?
Good question.
Yes, Brian.
Have you received any comments?
For the master plan?
Right, I'm late on them.
I have not received any comments. I don't know if they would come through me. All I know is that Brett McMahon and I are hot and heavy on it. And he's made a first pass, I'm almost through with my first pass, and we'll make a second pass.
So I'm, you know, we have a master plan committee, but at some point, I think the entire board needs to be looking at the master plan and to provide comments collectively. You know, it, extra set of eyes, a different way of looking at things. Paul, I mean, it needs to tell a story. The content is, it's meaty. It perhaps needs to be synthesized or orchestrated to where it flow, you know? Because at the end of the day, our, our credibility is on this. And if we can't, we can't sell this, then what, you know, that's the steering mechanism for the Amiet River Basin Drainage and Conservation District. And so we, we need to get it right. I know it's our first round, but it's important to get it right. Paul, can you expand upon this a little bit, the importance of the Amiet River Master Plan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I had alluded to before, the, the pieces of the ARBC puzzle are falling into place. You know, the board has been reconstituted. The board is engaged in a master plan. What we don't have is a list of projects that have been accomplished. So, you know, going forward, our reputation is going to depend on our plan, which, which then translates into our ability to get projects done. And I'm going to go off topic here and overstate something. But I think it's, I think it's, it, it bears bringing up to reinforce the importance of a master plan. You know, there was a record event in the, in the Amiet River Basin in the 70s. There was a record event in 1983. There was a record event in 2016. And surprisingly, we actually have record funding, record funding in, 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 I'll say at least in Louisiana, but in and around the Amiet River Basin. But, but after all of those events, what do we have to show for it? What projects have been delivered? What projects have been completed? And, and, you know, there have been intra-Parish projects done. There are efforts underway, but, you know, we're, we're eight years, right, outside of the 2016 flood, and we don't have a completed project. And I'll just remind the commissioners that within four years after Hurricane Katrina, the greater New Orleans area had a functional, incomplete, but functional hurricane protection system that helped absorb and redirect the energy of Hurricane Gustoff. And that was four years after one of the most expensive natural disasters in American history. And in August of 2016, the Insurance Institute of America described the 2016 flood in the Amiet River Basin as the fourth costliest natural disaster in U.S. history. An unnamed storm that surprised a lot of people was the fourth costliest natural disaster in U.S. history at the time. And, and if you can think historically about all of the hurricanes and other events that have hit not just Louisiana, but the United States, that's saying something. And yet we still don't have completed projects that reflect the protection that we should have put in place in the 80s, and to put the protection in place that we need in 2030 and 2040, for God help us, when the next event happens. And we know it's going to happen. We absolutely know it's going, going to happen. Nature reminded us of that in May of 2021. It's going to happen. And so the importance of the master plan and making sure that, that this reconstituted panel of really smart, capable, capable people, but people who are also accountable. And that's, that's a distinction of this panel, this, this commission versus previous commissions. This commission is accountable. You have elected people, you have your professional reputations on the line. And so commenting and putting forth the best master plan that we can is going to help us, one, establish our reputation as a muscular, a muscular flood control agency, but it's also going to position us to get funding in the future so that we can solve the problems of 1977, 1983, 2016, 21, 2001 Hurricane Allison. I mean, they're going to keep happening, and, and we need to be prepared. And we need to show that we understand that the people of the, of the, of the Amiet River Basin are, have experienced tragedy, and they're sick of it. And you know this, you already know this. So, so I went a little off script, but I, I think it, it bears enforce, reinforcing those points about the, the, the magnitude of a master plan and how it's going to carry this organization forward in the future.
Commissioner Cluett?
I agree wholeheartedly with Paul, but there's one thing that we, and that we, we leave out, in my opinion, particularly in Livingston Parish, that we have accounted. Congress Senate has brought the money here. We, the governor has appointed a great delegation here to, to spend the money. Our government liaison on the federal end of it is killing these projects from moving forward. That's why we don't have a completed project. Our federal delegation needs to speak some way to do, to improve on what Congressman Gray did with the NIFA Act and get us some shortcuts to all these problems. I'm one year into a permit application of that the taxpayer is hard-earned dollars, and I don't see a end in sight. And that's what keeping the projects from going, not the money, not the want to, is the federal agencies, bureaucracies, those are what's holding us back. The state seems to be doing their job. They've been taking, OCD has been great, CPR has been great. But it's just been those government agencies that keep putting one roadblock on the, each, after another. And it's all the federal government, whether it's, whether it's EPA, whether it's Decore, whether it's FEMA, whoever it is, there's always some federal government agency in there.
Thank you, and that is the truth. Some people are good at navigating that. Some people get rich from navigating that for local government. But it, it's a requirement that we have to do. And if they could trim that down, that would, that would help expedite, and we could show some dirt being turned. That's all we want to do. Any comments, any more comments? Commissioner, Commissioner Cluett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to bring up exactly what Mr. Cluett, Parish President, is that as you look at the master plan, and Paul, you're, you know, you're on board now. You guys work together. Yes, we, we can engineer, and we know what's good. We know what's going to work. As you spoke, and I lived through all those errors, is, because our master plan and what we're trying to do, how does that coordinate one with EPA and with all the environmentals and all the independent environmental groups? Because, you know, we're low and lower, okay? Everywhere we try to dig, shovel the dirt, we're going to move some low-line vegetation and some, some, okay? So that, that's been one of our major drawbacks over the past two decades, for sure, on, on major projects, is getting passed. Corps of Engineers is another, another thing, and I think Paul understands the Corps of Engineers as good as anybody in the room, you know? So, you know, that's workable. But do we get held on a permit based on, you talked about public comment earlier? We have, you know, we have landowners, homeowners, and people that live in areas that have a lot of comments on what's going on around them. But public comments, the comments by the agencies into a project is some of the hardest ones and take, take the longest to, to work out and get everybody to say okay and hold hands and go forward. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I would also like to thank Garvin for the work that you're doing to help us, the ARBC, with our Region Nine efforts, also with our water, our watershed master plan, I mean, our, yeah, master plan efforts. You know, and part of that is not only just project management, is, is helping us to administer the, these two facets of our, these objectives that we're trying to accomplish to the point where we're going to be getting, if we do it just right, we're going to get reimbursed. And so far, so good. Garvin, you've been doing a good job, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, reviewing and making sure that all of the funds that we have received for reimbursement is accounted for. So it's really not technically costing the ARBC anything, thanks to you.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, next item under old business is a report from Dewberry. Speaking of, our contractor who is working on the ARBC master plan. Can you, little status update? Sam Campton?
I'll make it quick, yes. It's a pretty short presentation this time. So as you're aware, we delivered the draft master plan to you guys on December the 31st. We are requesting feedback by January 20. Obviously, any feedback beyond that, we'll definitely take into consideration, but would like to request it by then so that we have adequate time to address it. So as you see, the document was obviously a lot of information in there. I certainly wouldn't have expected anyone to get through the whole thing by now. There's a, a lot of information. And also, there's a lot of, a lot of writing styles, and a lot of people contributed to that plan. So as I highlighted, one of my concerns early on with the compressed schedule, obviously, it took a lot of people to pull that together. And so we are working at the moment on getting the consistent writing styles, formatting, and a lot of QC, as you will see, there will be a lot. So I did notice a lot of figures in that, labels and things like that were incorrect. So that is the kind of thing we're working on now, going through some very detailed QC. So the next draft, we'll be able to incorporate your comments there, and it'd be a lot more robust. So in terms of the content, there was, there was five key sections of it. Chapter two is really is the understanding of where we are, the current conditions. And so this chapter is huge. There's a lot of data in there. We really wanted to be sure that we captured everything that we discovered through the, the modeling, through the research. And then chapter four is really the one that I think you find the most interesting. This is going to be the actionable one. But section two is really what informed the need for actions and recommendations. So if you're certainly constrained with time, I'd recommend reviewing chapter, chapter four. And then chapter five is, is going to be just wrapped up how the plan will be implemented. There's a few gaps, as I noted in the email that you had received. There's still a few gaps from here. We are waiting on some information still. And so the big thing will be the project prioritization. All the projects we included in there, we had, like, it is usually three or four pages per project, summarizing with maps and information on the performance of projects, mainly looking at them individually. So we are currently just doing some updates, just to ensure more apples-to-apples comparison with some of them results, especially when you're comparing projects, like some of the major detention and retention projects we included in the Upper River. And we're also going to be coordinating with your new, new director here on, on some of the project conclusions. We want to review these and get your final blessing on projects that are included or are not included. So one gap there is the Bi-Man check restoration project. We are still waiting on some information pertaining to what's, what's proposed there. And so hopefully, we can get that resolved and, and finalized to include the, that project in the report. So key thing is the plan implementation. What I'd like to do, once you guys have had a chance to review the projects, let us know which ones you definitely want to include, if there's any that you don't want to include. We want to do a one-full plan with all the projects that you want to move forward in a unified model so that we can show the end game. We know where we're going to be in 2050 if we do nothing. We want to show where we're going to be if we do something, and so that will be the final model. So as soon as we have their missing gaps, we can run that information. And you're going to have some real hard numbers on the benefits there. It's going to be in terms of the number of structures benefiting and the economic values. So there'll be some very powerful information there, once we can wrap that part up. And also, that will also define the timeline for implementing the plan and the sequencing of projects. Some projects you may want, not want to have on their own because they can have a negative impact, but in combination, everything works for the best. So in terms of the finish line, for getting this over the finish line, this is, is schedule I'm proposing. So December 31st is when we delivered it. As I mentioned, we're requesting your comments by the 20th. On receipt of them comments, if you have them sooner, we'd, we'd take them. We will review and address the comments, and then we're going to, we're, we're just finalizing some of them project simulations, as I mentioned before, while they're in the, in the document already. Couple of them, we're changing it to be more of an apples-to-apples comparison. We definitely noticed there were some sensitivities there. And then the final, final draft, so we'll provide an updated draft, which we're aiming for in, in March. We'd request your comments within two weeks there. And then from there, we'll just do them final finishing touches that you may have. And the plan is to get that to you in very early April so that you can approve it during the April Board Meeting to meet the, the deadline of submitting to the legislators. I think it's either 14th or 15th of, of April. So as, as you've already discussed with the schedule extended beyond then, the delivery to the legislators, that isn't like the end of everything. I think it's very important after that, that we roll out the final plan to the public. So one of the things that we proposed was having another round of the public open houses. We've done that already, gathering input from the public. The next stage will be, once the plan's finished, we would roll out the presentation of, of the master plan so that the public can see and ask questions. And then also, there's just so much data that's been developed here that I think if we can get this data in the hands of the communities within the ARBC, there is so much that can be done for things like emergency planning and response. There's a section in, I think it's in chapter four, that pertains to emergency response and how the data can be used to help if you have a storm coming in and you're expecting so much rain, there is a chapter there that's going to talk about how you can use the existing data to predict where, where the flooding is going to be and where the high-hazard areas are going to be, and some long-term recommendations. And so really, I think it's going to be key to get that data out to all the communities. And so that can all be done after the, the report's been delivered there to the legislators. So as much, we're just, we're just plugging away, trying to get, to finish our QC and ready to incorporate the comments. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any board comments? Any public comments? Sam, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No public comments? Thank you, Sam. Our third item under number. Our third item under number eight on our agenda is a, um, a status of the parish president, uh, board members' projects with the LWI, and this is regarding the, the. LM. The, the, the hundred million dollars for the MID, uh, watershed most impacted and distressed uh, areas in Region Nine that was allocated to Region Nine, uh, through the watershed initiative. Um, we have four projects that was selected by the board, uh, as regional and transformative scale projects in regards to flood risk reduction. And, um, so far, uh, and the projects are with East Baton Rouge and that's Bayou Mancheck. Uh, channel improvements and realignment of Wards Creek, the mouth of Wards Creek to where it flows downstream. And, um, Commissioner Rayford, can you give us a little, um, status on where we are with this particular project?
Well, yes, I guess I could, right? But. Sure, I'd be glad to. I think, uh, Sam just brought up a lot of the information on that, but we finally got the application that was prepared, prepared, working in conjunction with, uh, Ascension and also Iberville Parish in regards to, uh, get the application submitted when the timeframe was required. So that has been completely done, um, and been verified by OCD. Uh, we are in the process, uh, the model has been completed. Uh, there were some issues of concern, but I think we're going to work through those issues, uh, to submit the model, uh, to OCD because I think that was one of the questions that were asked. It should have been submitted this, this week already to them. Um, I do know we're having a meeting at one thirty today also with them and I'll verify again to sure they have it. It is a, it is a very important project for, uh, not only East Baton Rouge Parish, but it does impact Iberville and also Ascension. Um, it's nice to be able to have partners working together to look at trying to address the problems as a whole for the, uh, for the committee in, in general of the commission. Um, and we're going to push hard to get this, uh, project underway. I'm on, uh, certainly want to get with OCD and see where we are with the, uh, agreement so we can start moving forward with the, the project. I will just say this for public record because I do like to be sure everybody's aware of that. Uh, going through a process, uh, uh, getting the engineer of record on this project, we have to go through a selection board sometimes with an EBR to create some issues, but, um, or not issues, but create a little delay in time. So, I, I certainly want to be sure that, uh, that everybody knows on this board when they say, we're always, we're always, well, and we're pushing it every day, every minute because it is an issue that we know that it impacts not only East Baton Rouge Parish, and it will certainly enhance the, the water, uh, quantity in, in areas. And I think that's a big plus for us. And also, what we're also going to accomplish is to address, uh, Ascension and Iberville issues at the same time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Rayford. Uh, just wanted to clarify that this, this particular project is a result of an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, a tri-parish intergovernmental agreement. And that is East Baton Rouge, who's taking the lead, Ascension Parish and Iberville Parish. It benefits this entire region. Uh, and as you know, Wards Creek drains about seventy percent of metropolitan Baton Rouge, and it flows into Bayou Mancheck, which flows to Amit River. And this is a project that is going to help address a lot of the longstanding, uh, problems uh, that go back. I mean, it's nothing new. Pontchartrain Levy District has identified it. Before then, the Amit Rivers, uh, Basin, uh, Tribes, Bayou Mancheck, Regional Project, Tribes Project from the nineties identified this as something that needs to be done. So here we are, and hopefully through the watershed initiative and our tri-parish partnership, we're going to be able to do something. Thank you. All right, um, Livingston, if, if, eh, can you give us a little status on, uh, where you at with your project? Livingston Parish's project is the Lower Amit River, uh, Channel Restoration Project.
Okay, guys, this was twenty thou-, uh, twenty million and, um, with the ARBC, we still in the process of working the CEA out. Uh, we are all working on that. The survey is completed with the exception of there's a key location for modeling that was needed. We've got one more survey site to, to check again. H and H modeling, the models have been reviewing existing information and the base model setup. The vote that we took today is going to help us also tremendously. Environmental, the ELOS has submitted the permit application last year. We're waiting on a letter of clearance for work proposed within the JOS Wildlife Management Area from, uh, Wildlife and Fisheries to complete this application. Uh, there's many, many steps we're working at the same time, but it's like I brought up earlier, just federal government agencies. You know, we've got Indian mounds out there supposedly, there's that type of stuff. I want to make something real, real clear, kind of piggybacking on what Fred said and what Mr. Chairman John said earlier. This board working as a unit, as a whole, is very uplifting, guys. Uh, I won't, St. James Parish President, to know personally from me, that it seems like he may have been getting forgot about, but I promise you, I'm going to work hard on your be- behalf to make sure you're not forgot about the same way that Clint has helped me. And I want to be able to help you the same way. So, so. Yes, sir. Ye- yes, sir. And I, I would make, I would work hard making sure you get the next one.
That's wonderful. I appreciate the report. Um, and speaking of, uh, St. James, uh, President, uh, Dufresne, Commissioner Dufresne, can you, uh, you have a little, little update you could provide us in regards to your project that's been selected as out of the four projects for the hundred million dollars, and that is the West Shore Connection Levy Project?
Yes, sir. Um, our application has been submitted and we're currently addressing, uh, comments from OCD. Um, H and H model has been completed and submitted with the application. And, uh, the permit to cover the work was submitted as part of the levy permit application in September of twenty twenty-four. So, uh, things seem to be progressing and, um, we, we just can't make it happen fast enough.
This is, this is a big project, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. This is.
This is a very big project.
It means everything to the east bank of St. James Parish.
Um, I don't know if y'all drive down, um, LA ten going to New Orleans and look off to your left going south? You might get a glimpse of what the, the scale of this project and what it's going to do to protect, uh, St. James from.
Well, actually that's the St. Charles, St. John portion of the, uh, West Shore Protection Project. St. James Parish is somewhat, um, it's supposed to be one in the same project, but it's, it, it appears to be treated somewhat differently and, uh, we kind of, uh, behind a little bit on the, on the progression of the St. James's portion of the West Shore project. But this extension, this ring levy extension project that St. James Parish Government initiated is, is helping to get our portion advanced a little quicker than, than what the Corps of Engineers is advancing it. So that's why it's imperative that, that this project move forward and, and, uh, we have been in close contact communications with CPRA and with the Corps and, and, um, with, in fact, we have our engineering firm here as well, but, um, everything seems to be progressing, but, but when St. Charles and St. John's portion is, as it's, uh, coming to fruition, it's funneling everything back into St. James and, and these projects should be moving along more closely together with each other, but for some reason they're not. But, um, uh, I'm being, it's, it's coming. I'm, I'm confident that, that we're going to get our protection as well.
Well, thank you for that clarification and, uh, you know, we don't want to leave no one out.
Right, you know, I mean, that's like, I mean, other projects too that's happening. I know, uh, President Quintmore and I have been talking about the, the twenty-two project, you know, and, and I know how important it is to that area, but also I'm never, I can't, I can't overlook the fact that that water is coming into St. James. And I, it's just hard for me to watch these projects advance faster than ours is advancing. Because I know what the effects is going to be in St. James. So as long as I'm confident and I know ours is, we getting ours and it's moving at the right pace, then, then I can support anything that's happening upstream.
Yep, thank you. We respect that. And, um, you know, there, there needs to be a method to the, to the madness and a, a sequence uh, to, to offset any, uh, downstream impacts. And you being at the bottom, uh, hopefully this, this, your project, this West Shore Connection Levy and pumps will, will help.
Oh, absolutely. With that, I mean, that's what we need. After we have that in place, then, I mean, have at it. Y'all feel free to do whatever you need.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rayford?
Yes, sir. I certainly, I've forgotten to mention one additional parish because nothing happens within our area without dealing with Iberville Parish, uh, Livingston Parish and Ascension Parish. And, uh, I just want to comment by the fact that while I may have had a hard time crossing the line in the past, uh, certainly I, I have no problem with dealing with that today. And I really truly appreciate the fact that the cooperation and the, the, the excitement about working together, trying to do something for our parishes in, in Amit Basin Commission. To me, that is a, a, a plus. And you don't get too many pluses sometimes, uh, but I think we're all actually moving in the right direction to accomplish the goals and to reduce flood risk for people in this parish. Thank you.
Good deal. Any more comments on the West Shore Connection, uh, Levy Project? Okay, thank you, uh, President Dufresne. All right, um, we have one more project, um, out of the, the, the hundred million dollar regional transformative projects that the board had selected for these most impacted and distressed areas in the Amit River Basin and, uh, that is with Ascension, and it's the New River uh, pump station and channel improvements. Uh, Commissioner Quintmore, can you provide us a little update on where, where Ascension Parish is with this, this project?
Yep, thank you Chair. So, um, most of these projects have been worked on way before, um, you know, in the last couple of years. I know Livingston's been working on Lower Amit forever, St. James. A- a- and Ascension was left out of the West Shore project, and so ours are both extensions of that. And, and, you know, it's critical that, that St. James and Ascension, uh, link our West Shore extensions together. Um, any gap in that will, will cause problem for whatever parish. So, um, that's, that's critical. And I think when you look at what parishes are doing, um, including Ascension, we have already invested our own parish money into these projects. We're not waiting and just waiting for the federal dollars to come. We have invested a, a lot of money. As Livingston mentioned on their environmentals before and, and studies, um, St. James has expended tremendous funds on their project as well. Um, this LWI gets us to the finish line. And so i- in regards to our project, we have done a considerable amount of survey work and topographic elevations. All through there, we're working with civics on, on negotiations of, uh, property acquisition and, uh, right-of-way acquisition for, uh, getting these waters to, um, the pump station as well as, um, the commitment of twenty-one million dollars in, in local funds in addition to the forty to get us to the sixty-one in order to, uh, go ahead and, and build the station and do the, uh, improvements, including the Highway seventy-four, um, uh, diversion to get water into the Marvin Row Basin from the Bluff Swamp and Spanish Lake. What this will provide is when, when we have storms and we have the trifecta area of Iberville, Ascension and, and East Baton Rouge's water always converging on Alligator Bayou and that area coming from Fountain, Wards Creek, Iberville and Ascension, Mancheck stays elevated. And when it does, we have to close the gates. And when we do, we're trapped. We, we have no, uh, way to get that water out. What this pump station does is it enables to divert that water under seventy-four into Marvin Row Basin, send it to the pump station, which then puts it into the Mississippi River, which has unlimited capacity and absolutely affects absolutely no one. Okay, it's, it's zero impact on our surrounding parishes. It has a direct benefit to Iberville because it takes the water from Spanish Lake for which we share, um, or parish border with them. Um, it also allows for Mancheck and the waters of, of East Baton Rouge to get out, that, that we have an alternate route uh, to prevent flooding of homes. And so, um, that has a direct benefit. In normal operations, it will take water out from going, uh, to Marvin Row Pump Station and being put into the Mississippi River. Therefore, that water will not be impacting Livingston or St. James. So these are the kind of regional projects that we're talking about here. And when you look at the scope of the four projects, you look at the pump station and how it helps Mancheck and the Spanish Lake Basin above swamp, plus how it helps, uh, Livingston and St. James and diverting, uh, Dutch Town Geismar Water, uh, parts of, uh, West Gonzales all into the Mississippi River. And you look at Mancheck and those improvements, getting that water out faster. You look at the Lower Amit River and that, that, that clearing is snagging and, and hitting those hotspots and doing that dredging. Um, that has tremendous benefit and then of course, protection for St. James. All these projects work together. They all have a, 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 a purpose. And I can tell you that as an elected official, we share the same frustrations as our, our residents. Okay, we want these projects done yesterday, not, not, not tomorrow. And, and we do every, and, and, and we do everything we can to expedite them, everything we can. And so, um, it is important that we have the Amit River Basin Commission because it is an opportunity for us to sit together and talk about each ones and how we affect all each other. And that's the reason why these four projects are being done the way they're being done because they are all interconnected in some kind of way. And when you look at nineteen eighty-three and the impacts to, to, to Ascension, Iberville, I mean, yes, well, Iberville too. Ascension, EBR and Livingston. Um, and then you look at two thousand sixteen. These projects, what has been done since eighty-three to, to prevent sixteen? Okay, so you look at what, what we're doing now to prevent the next one, the Comete Diversion Project, these projects. This is probably the first time in history that this amount of infrastructure and change and, and diverting waters and protection has ever been done to this magnitude, ever. And, and anything we can do to help the Amit River Basin become more efficient and less bureaucratic. And that's whether that's state legislation, whatever it takes, that is an obligation for us. We have to push those agendas. We cannot allow for bureaucracy just to be the norm and accept it. We can't. Because the people that suffer, and there's many people that have, have still today have not gotten over the two thousand sixteen flood. As they watch their, their lives completely turned upside down and destroyed. And every time it rains, they have post-traumatic syndrome. Because it takes them back to that moment of that significant impact on their lives. And so, it is imperative that this organization do whatever's necessary to push these projects, reduce bureaucracy and, and complete this for the constituents that we represent. And whatever that takes. And I mean that. Thank you.
That was perfect. Well said. And, uh, it shows the cooperation of working together. And also, one unique thing about Ascension's project is that we have a water balance. There's X amount of water that comes in here. And, um, they're actually, or their project's going to be a subtraction from the balance. Uh, it's going to remove it from the basin, uh, not just push it down quicker or help it move here or there, whatever. Uh, so, uh, we appreciate it and we're looking forward to that. Uh, I know, I gotta, I gotta say this, and I know my parish president, newly elected Parish President Chris Dagel, uh, he appreciates it, uh, what Ascension's doing. He appreciates what East Baton Rouge is doing, working together. And I appreciate him for allowing me to sit here and represent him and work together with the board. So, uh, thank you, boss. And, uh, that concludes our projects, uh, reports. Thank, thank everybody for, uh, uh, providing us a status update. And our next item on the agenda is our fourth bullet under Old Business. It's going to be, um, the Comete River Diversion Canal Project. It's going to be the Comete River Diversion Canal Project. And I don't know who may be willing to report on that. Mark or you, Mr. Larry?
Larry.
Team Larry? Larry Marino and Larry Bankston.
Following up to the comments about frustration, this is the perfect example of frustration. But I asked Mr. Marino to, let's deal with the one that's most pressing, I guess, is Florida gas. So maybe you can give us an update on Florida gas.
So the two main issues regarding Florida gas, first is the big drill, which is more or less still on track to be complete in June, maybe July of 2025. They've been having some drilling problems, but they're working through them. Now that's of course to finish the relocation, at which point the fork and then, you know, do the, do the actual projects, which looks like about a year for them to do that. On Brooks Lake, we did receive plans with right-of-way and drawings. And so they're, they're looking into the acquisitions on the one hand and what might have to be done as far as relocations on the other. We don't know yet what the impact is going to be on Florida gas. They got to do the depth of cover survey to figure out how deep it is, whether maybe just some protection or maybe even nothing's needed, depending on how the scour might affect them. But that's, that's, that's just getting started. Those came in, in December.
In your packet, there is this document, it's referred to as key status data. As it relates to Florida gas, some of the items on this list have not even started and their duration is, one item that has not started is 500 calendar days. Another one who has not started is 360 calendar days and another one is 300 calendar days. So some of these items cannot even get started until the Florida gas issue is resolved. So again, this is just, and whether or not we have to go back through the FERC, revisit with FERC as it relates to the Florida gas, as it relates to Brooks Lake, we do not know yet, I think. We, that's still unresolved. So looking at some of these items, you're talking a year or more, a year and a half more from when Florida gas issue is resolved. So you're looking into 2026, 2027 as potential actual completion date. So I just, the level of frustration continues, but I, I just want the commission to understand that we, we meet monthly. Now Paul, it's been, Paul's been on those calls too, and he is aware of those particular issues. So we will continue to raise these issues with the Corps as well as with our delegation as to how we might be able to move this along.
Something to look forward to, maybe in the next legislative session, is potentially a legislation to force relocations along a more rapid path when there's foot dragging. You know, that's not to say most utilities relocate, they, they expect it, they work with you and, you know, it's, you're not their highest priority. Let's be honest, you're not making money. Some, less so. I think we're all very familiar with. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted, but we might want some port if, if that ends up happening.
Thanks for the update, guys. You know, we just want to see it get going, but we understand, you know, that, that these things, these assets, this infrastructure, where this channel line was drawn and construction is taking place, it requires, you know, permits, reallocation, all of that. And it's unfortunate, we just have to wait until that is done, appropriately done and approved. We wouldn't want something to come back later on down the line after the channel is constructed and didn't work out because we didn't do it right. Back to our agenda. Referring to number nine is new business. And I'm asking our board, we have a bank resolution, update signature authorities for Paul Sawyer as signer of checking accounts and business. The only checks he can't sign is his own. And all, all of that will be, go through Tony, Larry, myself, you know, so, and anytime along the way you want to see any of these transactions, feel free. But this will help expedite, but by no means compromise our, our process in doing business.
Motion.
Motion back. Any public comments on Paul, Paul's authority to sign checks?
What'd you say?
For Paul's authority to sign. Yes. So, all right. Got a second by Commissioner Harold. And any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Looking forward to it, Paul. And our next, our next item is, is general and non-agenda items and public comments. And we had one, one public comment from our public that registered, signed, and that's Mr. Ricky Goff. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. Okay. And, yes.
Don't listen, Mr. Marco.
There is a fee.
Don't listen to Rayford either.
Yeah. Yes, sir. State your name and your address, where you from, all of that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Ricky Goff, 32774, Purplewood Drive, Walker, Louisiana. Proud Walker Wildcat. I am a Livingston Parish Council District Number Seven. I come here tonight just to try to encourage and hope that we get the money and we did. And I appreciate y'all. So first and foremost, I want to say thank you. The second part of that is before I go into the, to the, how excited I am about this particular board is for myself personally as a councilman, I want to apologize for the previous meeting that was some confusion that went on. Everybody's very welcome here and if there's anything I can ever do, please reach out. The next thing I want to make sure is, is this gentleman here, Fresh President Ascension Parish and a few others have said it perfectly. We have some red tape and I think the stronger this board gets, the better we can maybe address some of that federal standpoint. But the camaraderie that this board is, is coming together with and the support of our neighbors to get rid of some of the water that's just continuing to cause our constituents, I'm being one of them, causing us problems in multiple parish. It's a lot of money. It's affecting a lot of people and costing a lot of people a whole lot more than what we're going to be investing. And the thing that sticks in my mind is I stood in Dillon Springs with my father in 1983. We watched the water line come up, watched it come up. To this man's comments, Mr. Paul, I think it was, your name comes up a lot. He went through those stages and what have we done to get to where we at today when we had a 2016? And this board, I just want y'all to understand how, how much it means to speak the jail and putting the money where, where it's most impacted. You'll get help. He helped him. He's a whole nine yards, putting water into the Mississippi River and not further downstream is awesome. So I'm going to shut up from there. I just want to make sure you understand that myself, thank you, constituents that I represent, I don't know if they'll watch this or not, but I think the constituents that I represent as well as all of these parishes will realize just how working together and cohesive that this board is becoming. And I want you to understand how much strength I feel that you're going to have to address some of those federal level problems moving forward. So I appreciate y'all. And if there's anything that I can ever do for you at Livingston Parish, and that includes if a councilman or someone, not a councilman, but if someone is leaving and they have blue lights behind them, you know, just, you know, I'll pray for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Goff.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Goff. I really appreciate that. I feel you. And, and we are encouraged by people like you that make us compelled to deliver and energizes us every day to, to operate with a sense of urgency. We're, we're doing all we can and look, everybody up here is all volunteer, all volunteer. And believe me, we, we, we don't drop the ball. We try not to or let it fall between the cracks. And we're encouraged by having Paul on our team too. So thank you. And do I have any more comments? Hearing no more comments, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
This very productive meeting. I have three motions. Okay. Thank you all.